Ready?
Good evening, let's open up the town panel bylaw. At 6:05 PM, sorry for being late, May 13th.
2021.
2021, that is correct. So Rebecca, would you like to ask a couple of questions?
Um, did you wanna, we need to prove the agenda?
I don't have an agenda in front of me.
Okay.
I don't think we have an agenda.
We don't have an agenda.
It's a hearing, it's a hearing, alright.
It's a hearing.
Alright, so Jim. Uh oh, there he is, oh, I love your background, okay. So, the question here Jim, that I'm hoping you can explain, recording it so that way people who aren't here will be able to watch it later, is regarding, um, and I'm gonna explain to how I understand it, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that's a good way to do it, regarding the, um,
Commercial.
Thank you, commercial versus village district. The way I understand it is this, is that yes, commercial and residential are separate kinds of zoning, however, in our present bylaws, they are overlaid, so everywhere we have a commercial zone, we have overlaid it with allowed residential zoning as well. And since we have done that in panel specifically, um, village now becomes just the one zone that has, allows both uses. So it has the same definition of what we do, but there's nothing that is only commercial now that's being open to residential, from what I understand, is that correct? Or am I wrong on that entirely?
I, I think you've got it right, let me, let me explain it, um, in my words, and see if that helps anybody too. So, so the, when, when we were going over the bylaws, it, and again, you know, the, the effort was made to try to simplify the bylaws and, you know, make it more straightforward for, or property owners and developers, um, to meet the bylaw requirements. So one of the things that, um, became apparent as we were looking over the bylaws, was that the, the village and commercial districts, there were two separate, you know, there was the vill- I think they were just called village and commercial, and village commercial. They were in all cases adjacent to each other, and the uses that were allowed in them, and the dimensional requirements, were pretty much identical for both the village and the commercial district. The only really significant difference being maybe that's a few uses that were permitted, commercial uses in the commercial district were conditionally permitted in the village district. And we, you know, we made an effort to try to get rid of as many of the conditional use classifications as possible, because conditional uses, you know, they interject a, a certain level of subjectivity and uncertainty, um, for the, for the developer. So we tried to clear that up just by coming up with clearer and more specific site plan requirements, and just making the conditionally permitted uses permitted uses. Now, there's still a few conditionally permitted uses, but, but we moved most of those to permitted, and once we did that, you know, really the differences between the village and the commercial districts evaporated. The only difference between the districts was and really has been the name of the districts. So, you know, and I think the perception is because, you know, the, the name was changed from, the, the commercial was incorporated with the village, that somehow we were, uh, you know, restricting commercial uses in areas where they had been allowed before. But that's really not the case at all, that, that, the allowed uses in those geographic areas haven't changed at all. We, we're just trying to show that those areas really are open to a variety of residential, commercial, and light industrial uses, um, and, and mixed uses, and, and a relatively high density. And so, you're, you're right Rebecca, there really, between the existing bylaw and this one, that the main change is that there's fewer pages when it comes to that.
But, but there's, there, is there any land in panel that has been opened to residential that was not before, or closed to commercial that was open to commercial prior?
Okay, so, um, almost no, so the, the only, the only zoning district changes that were made as far as geographical boundaries, um, are there was a forest area in the north central part of town that was relatively small and was surrounded by rural residential, and that just didn't seem to make sense to have that little island, so we just, um, added that to the surrounding rural residential zone. The only other geographic change was a really small one, it was just a misleading, i- in our impression section of the bylaw, we're down in the extreme south of town along Route 7. If you get past Bissin's Garage, which is still in the commercial district, there, there's an area on the east side of the road that's like really steep, and then it goes up and there's some residential land above it. And it's really not developable for commercial, it's not developable for anything, right? Right adjacent to the road because it's such a steep hill, so, you know, but there was some commercial land like up and over the top of the hill that you couldn't really access from Route 7, so that was added to the adjacent resident, um, residential district, I think it was RR1. And then on the other side of the road, again, just down next to the Massachusetts line, there was some land that was basically kind of lying between the railroad tracks and the river that really wasn't developable for commercial use, so, you know, a very small area, but that was just added to the adjacent residential too. But other than that, no, there's no commercial land that was taken out of commercial use, and there was no residential land taken out of residential use.
Um, Jamie's asking about industrial.
So, yeah, so the, the industrial districts haven't changed, areas that allow for primarily just, um, you know, in, a, a wide variety of industrial development, really just are, have always been relatively limited, that they're the area, you know, by the, the MAC, the MAC property on 346, and then the, the area up, um, near the dam, it's private land up between the, um, the, the dam and the sewage treatment plant. That, those are the only industrial areas in town. Now, that said, the village areas do allow a relatively wide variety of light industrial and light manufacturing uses, um, throughout the entire village areas.
So, it might, go ahead Jamie.
Go ahead.
You don't think we should have, um, a questionable industrial area along 346 and the railroad tracks?
I guess the, uh, if I could elaborate on that also, it's, uh, I, I kinda have the same question, it's, I, I, I noticed that it, uh, it is the same, but it, but it's also areas that are already being used, which means if somebody did come to town, um, and maybe it's not gonna happen, but if it ever did happen where we had a large employer wanting to do manufacturing in panel, we, we don't have any open land to put them on, because all of our industrial areas are already being used for other purposes. You got a town garage and the wastewater treatment facility at one of them, and the MAC molding plant at the other.
The, the town property, I don't think we could take and have them build there anyways, due to that, um, it was part of the Superfund site and all that stuff. So that falls under a whole nother rules and regulations. But, I mean, if I was in an industrial business, I'd be looking for a tributary to a major highway area, or access to a rail so I could ship my items out. And that's why I bring up, um, those other areas as possibilities. I mean, I'm not for destroying farmland and all that, but down the road, if somebody was looking for something, I, that's all I'm look, that's where I'm questioning it more so.
And if I can, uh, elaborate a little bit on that too, if we had one of those employers, um, God willing, if we, if we had one of those employers, I think it would actually help the rural nature of our, our town, because it would raise the baseline standard of living if we could employ people in, in, in mass uh, with, with more than we currently have. Um, uh, then that would increase demand, and of course, small businesses would thrive on that, I mean, everything would, would connect.
It also would help support our sewer system. That's how that was.
Possibly true too, yeah.
Originally designed, so it could take and be upgraded for something in the future.
Right, a- and, and there's, there, there's certainly no problem with that, we didn't, you know, we didn't, um, the planning commission didn't get into extending, um, you know, any of the, the zoning district boundaries, we talked about a few, you know, changes, but they, they didn't ultimately do any. You certainly can, not, there's nothing wrong with that, I, I would, I would say that, um, you know, the, again, the, the village areas, which are really very extensive in panel, do allow for light, so-called light manufacturing, but if you look at the definition, that includes a lot of manufacturing, it's really like the, the heavy manufacturing, the heavy industry stuff, which uh, acknowledged would be nice to have in panel or anywhere else, that's, that's limited to just the industrial zones. Um, absolutely no reason for you not to expand your industrial zones if you, you know, if that's what the town wants to do, um, to allow for more of that heavy type of industry on, on, you know, other land in town. Um, but that wasn't something that we had talked about, um, with the planning commission.
If something is turned industrial, um, that is not industrial currently, um, does that preclude use uh, for commercial, like a smaller version, for instance, say we find, um, a one mile square that we want to call industrial, does that get held waiting out for that big industrial build out, or can you put five small businesses on that piece of land?
Well, that's the, uh, if I could chime in there also, it, just because that's what I've been thinking about literally for years. It used to, we used to have, uh, you know, or at least that's what we talked about before, was commercial slash industrial. And I think that's what we had down at the racetrack before it became a flood zone, um, and, uh, and there might have been a couple of, a, a couple of other areas that had that. But when you think about it, i- if it does get snapped up as commercial, then, then again, we're stuck without an industrial, so it's, it's kind of a, a double edged sword. So to, to Rebecca's point, or at least to, to the question, is, uh, it would be nice if it wasn't just, uh, you know, it sat there not being used at all, because it's only for industrial, but at the same time, what do you do if it all gets snapped up as commercial, and now you have nowhere to put, uh, you know, real industrial?
Yeah, but, uh, Bob, that's, that's a, that's a really good point, that, that's an argument that other towns have certainly had, and, you know, Bennington in particular struggled with that one, with the, you know, the old Johnson control site, uh, by, um, the Home Depot area. You know, that, that is an area that is for a long time been zoned industrially, and, uh, you know, the, a, a lot of the industrial development advocates in town wanted to keep it just industrial, and other people that didn't want it to just sit there forever waiting for the hoped-for industrial use, wanted to, you know, liberalize the, the, um, standards for the district to allow commercial. So eventually the town did pass it, made it kind of a mixed commercial industrial zone. So in your, in your reg bylaws now, as they stand, um, the, um, you know, the industrial zone, which are, it, by acknowledging, very small areas now, they do allow for, um, manufacturing, light manufacturing, warehouse, auto service and repair, retail, um, retail stores and sales associated with a manufacturing facility, and then, you know, a bunch of other, um, uh, odds and ends, public institutional uses and, and industrial parks. So, um, it allows for some mixed commercial use, but it's not wide open to commercial use, I think probably because of what you suggested, uh, Bob, was because if it does get taken up in commercial, then you'd have to go, you know, create some more industrial land. But it's, you know, like I said, it's a two edged sword, i- i- there's no right answer to it, I don't think.
No, I, I, I think that's true, um, uh, and, uh, so, but let me ask that question, is what would happen if we didn't have any industrial, and, and there was somebody showing interest? Uh, how hard would it be to go in and change that? I mean, is that something you can go before the DRB and, or, or do we have to actually rewrite our bylaws in order to allow it?
You know, again, that's gonna depend very much on the nature of the industrial use, let me, um, let me just thumb through if I can.
Well, and, and my question does pertain to not light, I'm, my question is not about light industrial, it's about industrial.
Okay, um, yeah, so, good, so, that's, that's the question I was gonna make, so, uh, yeah, so, th- i- i- if it's, to, to your point, if it's light, if it's quote-unquote light industry, light manufacturing, it could happen anywhere in the village, the three village districts, which are quite extensive. If it's a heavy, you know, if it's like a, a, uh, heavy, you know, auto parts manufacturing, or, you know, some other kind of, um, uh, you know, um, heavy industry, then it would have to go in an industrial district. And if you didn't have space for it in an industrial district, then you'd have to do one of two things, I guess, you, you'd either have to create an additional, you know, extend your industrial district somehow, or change the zoning, um, in the, let's, let's say you had, they found land that was well suited for it in a village district, but it, the zoning didn't allow it, then you'd say, okay, we'll take the village district, let's say it's, you know, near Powell Village, that one, and, and say, okay, that one, we want to add industrial to that, to that village district, you could do that. It's a, it's not, it's not technically difficult, it takes about two months to go through the process if everything goes smoothly. You know, the, the select board can initiate the, the process, send a proposed, you know, they, you could call me up and say, Jim, draft a, an amendment to the zoning that adds, um, you know, heavy industry to the village zone, and I could do that, and then the planning commission is supposed to take a look at it and hold a hearing, and then do just what we're doing now, pass it on to the select board for, for adoption. So it's about a two month process, I mean, if you, if, if you knew that you wanted to, to do that, you could do it now, you know, you'd have to, you'd have to make the amendment and send it back to the planning commission, and they'd have another hearing, and then it'd come back to you.
Okay, so I, and, and I, I honestly don't see a downside, other than it's gonna take a little bit longer to get it back to the planning commission and write it, I don't see a downside of doing it now, it's not likely to occur. And of course, any, anyone who shows interest in any of our village districts to come in with, uh, heavier, uh, manufacturing or industrial is gonna have to go to the DRB, it's all gonna have to be approved anyway, and they, and they gotta find the space for it. So, and so there would be a process, um, I, so I'm, I'm not sure why we wouldn't just allow it now.
Well, I mean, I, I, that's entirely, that's entirely, um, the board's, um, discretion, obviously. I think that the only, you know, the only pushback you might get is that, you know, if, if you do just blanket and add heavy industry to, to those districts, then, um, you know, then it could happen anywhere in those districts, and, and you might get some, um, pushback from um, some of the residential property owners who may not want, you know, a, you know, heavy manufacturing, you know, next to their, their residential property.
That's definitely true, um, and that's, uh, and that, then that's a very good point, um, uh, that's a very good point. But, uh, but that's also a good argument for having industrial off by itself somewhere that's away from those districts.
Yeah, no, I, I agree, I think, I think that the, 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 the right answer, if there's a right answer, might be to figure out where you would like additional dedicated industrial zoning, um, you know, other than the two small areas that, that are zoned that way now. And, you know, maybe that's, you know, i- it could be something that you ask the planning commission to look at, I mean, you could adopt this bylaw, which in, in my, in my estimation, and, and don't take any pride of authorship in this, but I think it's a whole lot better than the current bylaw you have. It's a lot easier to understand, and it has a lot fewer complicated restrictions on property. So, you know, you could just adopt this one, and then, and then direct the planning commission to start looking at, um, appropriate land for new industrial zone, and then just initiate an amendment to this zoning bylaw.
I, 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 I like that idea, and to, to further, uh, uh, since you're not gonna blow your own horn, I'll do it. I would, I, I, it was, uh, it was, I, I was really pleased when I read the, uh, when I read the bylaws. I really liked the way, it was very easy to understand, and, and the fact that you highlighted everything, or, uh, that, uh, that it was easy to find the changes. So it became pretty easy to compare the old to the new. Um, I, I really appreciate that.
Sure, it, it was, it was, it was a fun process, and I think, I think the planning commission made some good decisions along the way. Um, yeah, again, I don't, it, it really, if, if the planning commission started working on the industrial zoning question right now, it really wouldn't take any longer whether you sent the existing bylaw back to them without adopting it, or whether you adopted this one and just told them to get started on their next project, which would be an amendment to this right away.
Um, I, uh, uh, well, I'm not sure how the board feels, but I would, I would actually want to give them the, uh, the instruction to start, to start looking for an industrial area. That's, uh, that would be my, uh, my ask. And again, it, we, we don't know that that's ever gonna happen, we hope it will, but, uh, but, uh, y- you know, it's still Vermont, it's still not all that business friendly. Um, but we don't want to write it out either.
Jim, this is Mike Gardner, Jim, we, we know we're sending this back to the planning commission, because one thing that was brought up by, um, a new planning commission member the other night, is uh, like camps, hunting camps, and so on and so forth, in the new bylaw are only permitted in the forest zone, and not on RR1 and RR2. Um, so, um, there, there's a couple other things that we came up with, so, you know, that, we know this is going back to them.
Okay.
You know, at any rate.
Okay, yeah, um, yeah, I don't recall that change to the, to the bylaw, if it was a change, but, um, yeah, I mean, you, I guess either way, I mean, you, you could, you could, you could either send it back, um, or, you know, again, you could adopt it as it is, recognizing that there are some things you want, you want to change, and then say, okay, as a separate amendment, you know, planning commission, take a look at camps in RR1 and RR2 and industrial land, and, um, be quick about it. But, um, so, you know, the fact that you're not a hundred percent happy with everything doesn't mean you have to send it back, you certainly can. Um, but you can adopt it as it is in that, or with minor changes, and then, uh, ask the planning commission to start working right away on a new amendment.
Can I ask a procedural question? This is Rebecca, um, can they adopt the bylaws pending the change to adding the ability to build a camp on RR1 and RR2, or is that something that needs an amendment, because it's not in there now?
Um, yeah, I mean, they, um, yeah, I wouldn't classify that probably as an emergency thing that the select board could do as an interim bylaw amendment, but, um, you, you, you could, you know, you, you could certainly, um, initiate the process right away, I mean, that amendment adding a, a permitted use in RR1 and RR2, you know, literally takes two minutes to draft, you know, you're just adding another line to the bylaw, so, you know, the planning commission could approve that for hearing at their next meeting probably. Um, so that, that could happen like immediately.
I have some small ones anyway.
Well, if there's, you know, if there's, if there's a, some, you know, fairly small technical changes, you know, that the select board, um, you know, can, can make those changes, you know, without necessarily sending it back to the planning commission. If they become substantial, where you're, you're changing, you know, making significant changes to uses that are allowed, or, or districts, then you would have to send it back to the planning commission to get their input.
Okay, so the, the industrial area would have to go back to there, but, uh, but say, for example, if I wanted to change 3 dot 5 dot 3, reconstruction after damage gives residents who, uh, who are faced with hardship three years to start building, and then three years to finish, and then another three years to finish building in order for them not ha- not to have to go back, uh, uh, back, in order for it not to be treated as new construction, I think is, is really what it says. Of course, I'm paraphrasing and putting it all in my language. Um, and, and my, my, it, to me, that seemed a little restrictive, um, if that was five and five, I'd be a lot more comfortable with it. Um, it's, uh, I mean, if somebody, somebody's met with that kind of hardship, and they didn't have insurance, they might want to save money for five years.
Bob, I think, I think it's one and one right now.
Uh, no, that, that's actually, I think that's new, I think that's net new, hang on, let me, let me pull it up.
I, I'm, I, there's, there's a bylaw in there now for that, because I just went through this with, um, on state line not long after I became zoning administrator, and I'm pretty sure it's one and one. I don't know if there's anything related to hardship in there, to be honest with you, but I think if somebody's.
Well, I mean, it does, it, it actually doesn't have, well, because it's talking about reconstruction after damage, so I, you're right, it doesn't say hardship. It's reconstruction after damage.
I'm, I'm pretty sure it's.
But then, but I think about what that means.
Yeah. Michael's probab- probably right, because a lot of our municipal bylaws around Bennington County have that one year, 18 month thing. And since I, I have it underlined and there is a change, I think it prob- the change probably was increasing it from one year to three years. So it actually liberalized it a bit, but there isn't any statutory prohibition on you liberalizing it further, if that's what you want to do. And I would say that that would probably constitute a, you know, the minor change that the select board could make, um, at the close of the hearing, and then adopt it with that change.
And I, I, I do like five and five better, uh, one is it doesn't happen to that many, we're all, we're only talking about damage, and then we're just making it easier on the people who suffer the damage.
Okay.
Although I'm, I, I'm very glad to hear that it, that it was actually liberalizing what was already there. Although I, I can't find it in the old bylaws, so when I got them in front of me.
Yeah, you know, there, there were some, there were a few, um, things that we moved around, so I, I'd, I'd have to refresh my memory too, because, uh, we were trying to organize it, so it was a little easier to find things, and, and in doing so, I might, I might have moved things around and made them harder to, to, to track down from the original.
I'm, I'm pretty positive it's one and one now.
Yeah, but I, you know, but I still feel that, uh, five and five is probably better. Uh, and I appreciate that it, that, that it's, that it's better now than it was, if it was one and one. Okay. Um, I guess the only other thing was the PUD, uh, my only other input would be the, the, uh, uh, I forgot what that stood for, but.
That's a, that's a planned unit development, which was, you know, was a replacement really for the, the cluster subdivision thing, which was kind of outdated and, and not i- in really only included residential, whereas the PUD allows flexibility and zoning standards for, um, you know, commercial and mixed uses as well.
I have a procedural question to help you guys stay on track, if that's okay, we have Jim here, he's, he knows the procedures, so, um, tonight, as, this is our second hearing, Jim, the board, um, what?
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, the board can make a motion to accept and approve the bylaws as is, and then create a list of what they want amendments worked on and changes done with the planning commission over the next couple of months. Or they can send the whole thing back and say, we would like you to look at these changes and then go back to the hearing process, is that, is that the two separate paths they have in front of them tonight?
Um, well, th- there's another, other one, I, I guess, I mean, like I said, they, they could, y- you could close the hearing, um, and then, and then, um, you know, make a motion to adopt the bylaw with, you know, a couple minor changes, you know, like, like the one that Bob just suggested with going to five years for reconstruction after damage. And I, I don't believe that would have to go back to the planning commission, you know, you could just incorporate that into your motion to adopt the bylaw with that change. Um, alternatively, you could just adopt it exactly as it is, or you could just, a- a- and if you did that, you'd probably then, uh, you know, send it back to the planning commission saying, um, okay, we adopted the bylaw, thank you very much for your good work on that. We did find, you know, one or two other things, like the industrial land that, that we want you to work on as a new project, start that right away. Or you could not adopt it, you know, and say, okay, we're just gonna hold off on adopting this until the planning commission, you know, comes back with recommendations for industrial zone land, or whatever else you want. Uh, you know, again, I, I don't think timing wise, there's, there's not a lot of, a lot of difference, because, you know, you're gonna wind up um, having to have, go through a whole, you know, series of hearings, one way or the other. The, the advantage, um, of, of having the board adopt, the select board adopt it sooner rather than later, is that at least you get you know, a, a more streamlined, easy to understand bylaw in effect right now. And, and then, you know, say, okay, here's a couple of really discreet issues we want the planning commission to work on and get back to us with, um, you know, and, and, you know, put them under the gun, you're the bosses, you know, tell them, hey, you know, we want this back to us, you know, in, in six weeks or whatever.
Well, they have, our planning commission. Well, they have, our planning commission has a meeting scheduled next week. And I think, I think the changes that we have, other than the industrial, the other changes that we have um, came up, that they came up on Tuesday are fairly minor and they should really be able to work those out for the most part on Tuesday night. And just, just for the record, Jim, because we are recorded tonight. I know you and I had this discussion and I know you had it with Megan Randall about the tiny houses. Um, and I know your recommendation to me was to just treat them as any other residents. And I wanted to further that a little bit, just to de- define it a little better, even if they were on wheels. Um, as, you know, so that they were quote unquote, mobile. I don't know, you know, I don't think we, we may have touched on that a little bit. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I, I'm not familiar with a lot of um, zoning regulations that specifically deal with, you know, what are, what are commonly called tiny houses, whether they're on wheels or not on wheels. I, I think my recommendation to you was to look at how they're, how they would propose to be used. And if they're proposed to be used as, you know, someone living there on a full-time basis, um, you know, whether they're on wheels or not, there, it's a, it's a residence and would need, need to meet the requirements of a, of a, of a single-family home. I mean, the only significant difference I could find, and I think it's one that often is the case with, with tiny houses, is that they may very well qualify because of their small size as an accessory dwelling unit. And so if they could be classified as an ADU, an accessory dwelling unit, then they could be, you know, permitted on a lot that already has another house on it. But on a, on a vacant lot, if you're gonna put one of them down, I'd say you just treat it as a single-family residence.
That file was same for a uh, camper, if somebody decided to buy a camper and utilized it the same way. I think it's the same thing, but that's why I'm asking.
Yes, it's probably, it probably is the same thing, but you know, it gets tough because it gets to, it, it gets to the nature of the use and monitoring the use. I mean, if somebody puts, you know, a Winnebago on a lot and they, you know, they, they connect it to a septic system and a well and they're living there full-time, yeah, it's a house. You know, if it's, if it's a camper that's strictly a recreational vehicle that's just being stored there, then it's a different thing. But you know, at, at some point, you know, that, that requires some monitoring and documentation of how it's being used and, you know, that, that certainly can get tricky.
Right, right, no, right. I, I'm looking to do the, I'm looking to, to define. So, you know, when we said we were gonna send that back to the planning commission for, to revisit that. And the camps in the RR1 and RR2 district, again, were, were a concern.
So your decision, your decision tonight is, do you want to approve as is and then instruct, or do you want to return?
I, my, my personal opinion on, on approving or, or tonight, or send back is to send it back because I'm not comfortable approving something, hoping that they're gonna um, revisit it and, and go the way that we're looking for. That's just my opinion. I mean, I, I want to approve something that, yes, I know what it is, not a hope.
I agree with that.
I agree with that.
Well, personally, I think it's somewhere in the middle. It's a, uh, we need to give them some instructions on what to do. And I think they can come back with the, with what to do with tiny houses and, and uh, I guess we can make the five and five if everybody agrees to it. Um, uh, we can make those things, but I think it's gonna take them longer to find an industrial zone. Right? So I, I would give them more time to do that. Let's come back with these and then we can give the direction to the planning commission after we pass the uh, the, the easier changes to find a, find an industrial zone and then we'll go through the process in a couple of months when, when they find a, find a place. Or if they find a place.
Right, I would, I, I don't have a problem even doing, doing it that way, Bob. Uh, you know, if they worked on this Tuesday night and came back to us with the, with the tiny house thing and the camps and the other minor things that we came up with on Tuesday. The unregistered vehicles, those things there. And then, and then we have hearings for that and adopt them and then revisit, have them revisit the industrial because I, I think it's gonna take them longer to find that if they find it at all. And so, uh, you know, and to get these more streamlined bylaws in place. My, my problem is, um, and I'm not overly concerned about the industrial, so, and we all know that, I don't hide, I don't hide that. My problem is the tiny houses, the camps, the unregistered vehicles. Um, Right, so that, that's my thing about adopting these bylaws as written right now. I mean, you know, that's, and that's, you know, that's just me.
Well,
I think
Go ahead, go ahead, Bob.
Uh, I was just saying that, you know, I, I'm, um, I think I'm agreeing with Jim, if I understood you correctly. Um, that, that I'm, I'm not as, I'm not as uh, as worried about the tiny houses and making that more restrictive. That's uh, I mean, it depends on how they're gonna use it. I mean, if you're, it, it almost falls into the same thing as a camp. If I wanted to put one of those tiny houses on wheels in my upper meadow, just because uh, I want to have campfires out there and enjoy the view. Um, why, why, why would I be restricted in any way from doing that? Then it becomes the, uh, I forgot what the designation was, but another, another unit on your property. Um, that, that's a, that's different than uh, than, than say, a and that needs to be treated differently than somebody who's actually, that's their residence. And distinguish between those two.
Right, that's why you treat it as a, as a single-family dwelling instead of an accessory dwelling unit.
If it's the only one there, but if, but if I want to build on my property and I just want to put one of those, what you're calling a tiny house in my upper meadow, it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be something where somebody lives. The house is exactly the same as what you're calling a tiny house. It's just that no one's gonna live there. It's all, I'm gonna use it for a little camp, uh, not a camp, but to have a campfire.
That's where the designation comes in between a, a residential dwelling. And correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, but isn't that the definition between a residential dwelling and a camp?
Uh, yeah, I think lar- largely that's, that's true. Um, you know, if it's, if it's not, if it's not intended or used primarily as, as a residence and only occupied, you know, whatever the definition is, you know, periodically, no more than certain amount of time. Yeah, and certainly Bob's, you know, tiny house hangout in his upper meadow would certainly qualify as that, you know, then, then you wouldn't treat it as a single-family house, right?
So whatever language we ask for has to, has to distinguish between those two. And I thought, what I, I thought I heard that, that it's difficult to do, it's, it's kind of difficult to distinguish between them and that's why the laws are the way they are. So, uh, being less restrictive.
We only have fifteen minutes left before we make a decision and what we're gonna do. Should we open a public comment? Ronnie, do you have something to say?
I agree with Bob, you're putting it on your own property somewhere. I gotta place a, I don't know, a piece of property. I guess you could call it a camp. I don't know what the hell you wanna call it.
Well, that's what, that's why there's
Call it whatever you want.
That's why there's definitions in there that define what they are.
Right, well, what I'm saying is, you know, if a guy's got a piece of land somewhere, he wants to stick it up there, he's gonna pay his tax. What difference does it make, when you think about it? When you're giving it
I don't, I don't think, you know, under your existing zoning, it, it probably would be permissible now to do that. Again, you know, the, the only, the only time you run into a problem is, you know, you put that small, you know, dwelling unit or whatever you want to call it, tiny house up there. And, you know, and your intention is to use it seasonally or for recreational use or whatever, and then, you know, you know, cousin Ernie comes up and is looking for a place to live and, and moves in full-time. You know, then, then the, the, the use changes and it becomes a single-family dwelling and it's, you know, there, there's additional requirements for, you know, wastewater disposal and all that kind of stuff, so, um, yeah, it's like, like Bob says, it's, the trick is monitoring the use at that point.
Okay.
Um, and, and, you know, but I was just gonna say, you know, bottom line is, you know, I mean, you know, push guys one way or another. You can, you can handle this adoption any way you want. You can either adopt this or, or send it back to the planning commission. So if you send it back to the planning commission to, to rework, you know, however many pieces you want, just, you know, be clear what you want them to do, give, give them a list. Um, they'll consider it. Um, they probably, you know, would, would want to have another public hearing at the planning commission level and then approve it for submitting back to you for your subsequent public hearing or hearings.
Like what we just did now.
Right.
And that would do the exact same process if we were doing amendments after the fact as well. It would still have a hearing at the planning commission level and two hearings at the select board, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, question for the board is, did we decide in the previous meeting what we were gonna do with the uh, the car ordinance part? The, um, that was in here too, right? How many cars you can have and that sort of thing?
More than three unregistered vehicles can be on your property. And we wanted to add penalties if we're allowed to.
Correct.
Right.
But I don't think we agreed upon an amount.
But, but I think the, uh, the current says thirty days and I think we were gonna extend it that time too, right? Or, or is it just you can have up to three and there is no time limit?
No, you can have up, you can have up to three unregistered vehicles on your property. And anything after that, we were gonna fine them. So much a month, correct? We didn't come up with a, amount. We said twenty-five to one hundred and Mike thought that was too low.
I thought twenty-five was too low, right?
Right.
I'm, I'm comfortable with a hundred.
So you'd want to do a hundred dollars?
A hundred per vehicle per month.
Right. Anything over three.
Right.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I say about that is, you know, the, the way that you assess fines, if you're doing it through a, a zoning um, restriction is, is um, you know, kind of dictated by statute. So there are certain limitations on the amount of a fine that you can impose. And, and I would just say that, you know, whenever you go that route and, and it's good to have that hammer, I guess. But it, it's, it's, gets pretty complicated and legalistic and, and, you know, you, you wind up going to court more often than not, and so you're gonna involve your lawyer there anyway. But um, the, the, you, you basically do have to follow the statute as far as what the limits are on, on the fines.
Okay. This is something that
Right.
And find out for you guys.
Right.
That's a good job for them.
Okay.
Research fines.
Okay, so I, uh, I think that's, though, uh, that covered everything, uh, everything I wanted to talk about in these.
Covered everything that I had written down from Tuesday night.
And also I, I do want to say to the planning commission and to Jim, I think this was a really nice job. Uh, and, and streamlining is the right way to go. Uh, I'm always for streamlining. This was nice, this was a nice job, allowing people to make their own decisions more so than us imposing our will on them.
Jim, Jim Winchester um, weighed the old bylaw and the new bylaw and found how much less the new bylaw weighed, so he decided it was probably a, a progress.
That's, that's the staircase method. It was great.
Okay, thank you so much for all your help. We really do appreciate it. Thank you very much, Jim.
It's a good group to work with, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, if you need any, if the planning commission, if it wants any help with the bylaws, just, you know, give, give me a ring, send me a note and um, we'll, we'll get that done.
All right, thank you so much.
Sure, thank you.
Again, is there anybody out there for public comment?
No one's raising their hand.
Anybody has anything to say or add? Could you please raise your hand? Okay, so no public comment. So.
Take a motion on what you want to do.
Yes, we need to take a motion on what we want to do.
Go ahead, Bob, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, just real quick, I make a motion on, uh, I forgot the section already. Uh, on section three point five point three to increase the years to five and five for a, uh, you must start construction within five years and you have up to five years to complete it. Rather than three and three, which is, which is what's in the law, uh, currently in the law. Waiting for a second, I think, right?
Well, we don't know how long it's gonna take somebody. Things are traveling at a high rate of speed. Maybe they'll be going too fast for the rest of us. So, I think that uh, three years is good enough.
So we don't have a second? So the motion dies?
How's that?
That's good.
Okay.
I like it.
Well, that's a first.
All right. Do I, can I entertain another motion?
For adjourn?
No, to, to pass the motion to
I'm gonna send this back to the planning commission for the changes. Requesting them uh, to clarify for tiny houses.
Uh, the changes that we came up with, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
We'll make sure they're written out.
The tiny houses, um, the hunting and fishing camps, the industrial and, um,
Well, the three, the three vehicle, uh,
Not the industrial?
Uh, non-registered vehicle.
Non-registered vehicle, okay.
And research fines for the above.
Yep.
Um, for right now, I think industrial one, some additional.
Time for that?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
We're not gonna follow the, the state rules.
What's the state rule?
State rules is you can have three. You can't see them from the highway, you can have more.
That's what they're advocating for.
We're advocating for three.
Three period.
You're advocating for, yeah, all I'm saying is do, do we really want to do that or not? I mean, we, we got people backed in the corner. There's some people, wow, they got some older stuff. So, I don't know whether it's the right thing to do or not.
So what are you saying the state regulation is?
I've got stuff down behind my place that, that uh, I built a hedge row there.
Right.
I
So the state says if you can't see it, it doesn't matter? Is that what you're saying? I, I don't know, I'm asking.
I mean, I'm getting rid of the other things. I got some other stuff that, that's out front. I'm just curious, that's all.
We can add
I think maybe they ought to
Researching the state.
Researching the state.
Maybe they ought to look at the state and see what the hell the state's doing.
Yeah, okay.
That's all.
Okay, so with that
So make an amendment to that.
Yeah.
Research state policy.
I'm fine with that.
You're fine with that?
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Let's research what the states want, you know.
All right, okay. So with that, Ronnie, do you agree or disagree?
I agree.
Okay, Bob, do you agree or disagree?
Uh, I'm, 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 I'm not clear on what was just said. So uh, uh, are we saying that, I, I believe the way that it's written, it doesn't say that you can't have a, a vehicle. It says it can't be visible. I believe that's the way it's written. And now we're changing that to say you can have up to three rather than one in only thirty days. So uh, you, you can have as many as you want if they're not visible from the road. Right? Isn't that the way it's written?
That's the way that I, I read it anyway.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I always understood. So I, I think we're upping that to three and, and we're saying that uh, 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 that you'd only get fined if you had more than three.
I think that what was, was Ronnie wanted to add was that the planning commission should research and see what the state allows. That the state allows more than three if it's shielded and it's fenced and it's unseen from the state or town.
No, okay, okay, I, I understand. So we need to research that, but I'm pretty sure that what the state allows and what we had in our, in the ordinance was that uh, was, had everything to do with visibility. You can have as many as you want. It's just a matter of them being visible from the road.
Send this back to the planning commission. You don't have to have the specific traffic board for you to Specific language, it's like, I want you to look at, this is the direction we wanted to go.
Right.
This is a key point.
Right, right, okay. So with our key points that we are sending back. You agree. All right, Bob.
Uh, well, and that's on all of them too, right? So we're talking about the tiny houses?
Talking about everything that we've discussed tonight.
Everything we talked about.
We're sending it back to them. And Tuesday.
Uh, then uh, So then, uh, I.
Jamie, Mike.
All right.
Angie, I.
Can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Oh, one second. This is administrative.
Okay.
I will help Megan next week or over the weekend, since they're meeting on Tuesday, to craft a letter that explains all of that to the planning commission, okay? So that it's very clear what the next tasks are for them, all right?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Second it.
No.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, my God. Ronnie. Bob.
Aye.
Jamie. Mike.
Aye.
Angie, aye. Thank you, everybody. We'll see you in about five minutes.
Yeah, we're gonna, I'll mute this and we'll just leave it open. All right, here we go.